Parks and Rec proclamation. I see some people here and I want to start with Plaimo. Where's Plaimo? Plaimo! Come on!
There he is.
And the team, come on! Come on! Come on, come on! Aww.
I've never seen anybody be that scared of the mayor before.
Parks and Rec Month in July. And so glad that we have everybody here. And everybody's so happy. Happened to be a home staff meeting talking to 25-plus women at a PEO meeting. And a lot of subjects came up about parks. And how proud they are of what we have in parks. They've mentioned several things. And then they mentioned trails. And how much people use trails. And where we're going with trails. And what's coming next in trails. And why don't we widen them some? And why don't we expand a little bit? Then Phase 2 and Phase 3, more coming. And even just kind of other things we talked about came back to Parks and Rec. And we're so proud of our entire team. And we're so proud of the parks, our department, everyone that is part of it. I'm very, very proud and privileged to read this proclamation signifying July as Parks and Recreation Month. Leadership of our Rec. Very good. So proclamation is whereas parks and recreation programs are integral part of communities throughout this country, including our own city of Cape Girardeau. Whereas our parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in the city of Cape Girardeau, ensuring health in all citizens, contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. I can't overemphasize enough the economic benefit of our parks. Whereas parks and rec programs build healthy, active communities that aid in prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally impaired and disabled, and also improve mental and emotional health for all citizens. Whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion to local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. Whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. Whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide habitat, comfort for development, and produce habitat for wildlife. Whereas parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide places for children's adults to connect with nature and recreate. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas the city of Cape Girardeau recognizes the vision, drive, and parks and recreation, trails, parks, and rivers, and recreational resources. As we resolve, defining the mayor of the city of Cape Girardeau do not hereby proclaim the entire month of July, July 17, as Parks and Recreation Month. And with this there. Parks and Rec in July. Well, my thoughts are... (Applause).
Well, first of all, you are right. We're very blessed as a city to have great resources. And Parks and Recreation is one of our best, our crown jewels. But it doesn't happen without a fantastic staff. And so, you know, kudos to them because they, especially in the summer, day in and day out, they are there for all of our citizens, and our visitors, and old and young. I think it's a Wonder Woman thing tonight because we've got the young girls. Even Posette over there stays. I mean, I'm not quite sure that she's happy with Plaimo, but she will in a couple of years. So, you know, young and old, we are there for you. Parks and Recreation has a variety of program services and activities. But the other piece of that is I'd like to recognize our park board members. We have Tracy Glenn here. We have Danny Essner is the chairman of our foundation board. Bob is our council liaison. Robbie Guard is our liaison. He's beautiful. Did I miss anyone? So these citizens are very active in helping be the ambassador and that liaison for all things helping Cape Girardeau into a bigger, better, fun place. So I always say fun is our business, but we take it very seriously. So we're here for you. And thank you so much, Mayor. Appreciate the proclamation.
Very good. Thanks to all staff for all you do. Great to have you. Thank you.
Mayor, if you could point a step back down and stand in the center, please, we'll leave you alone. If you were about 5'5" or taller, you could do stuff on the back of the stairs or whatever that's going. Line up around her. Start with Plaimo.
That may be you.
Okay, smiling faces, look at me, please. Thiny face. All faces will work.
Uh-oh. I think we got a little packet here, too, huh?
Yeah, it's got a little cute package.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mrs. Jones. Okay, next on the agenda, council, I wanted to put on the agenda, I'd like to have a little discussion regarding our temporary position in the Ward 4, Ward 6 council seat. Don't want to talk about names, but we've had several show an interest. And just like to get some input on how council wants to handle going through this process with the people that apply. Interview, formally, council study session. Just would like to have some input as we go through. Wayne's last meeting will be when?
The last meeting in July.
Last meeting in July. So he'll have two more meetings. And then we'll probably fairly quickly make some decisions there. But I'd like to get some input. So it's a council, it's a council decision, and I want council involved in the process. Open it up.
How many so far expressed an interest?
Well, I think I've heard from about six. I don't know how many have come in. Four in officially, and then the other two that I heard from, I don't know which ones they are, but expressed an interest and we're inquiring anyway.
How many of those aren't interested in running?
Didn't, I didn't say, but I've kind of made it known that that shouldn't be a requirement that they weren't going to run, which we did last time.
Right.
Ended up, I think, being kind of a mistake. But...
I've heard of one that's interested that doesn't want to run.
Run, okay. Okay, all right. So we're going to get through that as we go on.
I don't think it should be a requirement that they go on. I mean, if it's a temporary spot, I'm fine with that. I would think that, you know, as long as we got, you know, the applications, we have them in and let them give an overview. And then it allows us to ask some questions about each individual, maybe some things that we're curious if we don't know.
Okay.
That's just me.
So Rob, to be clear, it wasn't that it was a criteria that they were going to run. It was a criteria that they were going to run.
Were going to run, yeah.
Because we were going to have more than one person. Who was going to run against another person, and council's going to appoint somebody while we waited for the election. So several of us thought that it wouldn't be appropriate...
It's almost like we were endorsing.
In order to appoint someone prior to the election.
So the first meeting in, you comment, and I kind of agree with that, the first meeting in August, invite those that have officially applied to come and address the council during the study session.
I would like to know, Harry, since in this case Wayne is resigning, why we can't discuss it sooner? I'd like, we could appoint someone before.
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely.
I would like to see Wayne be here, maybe his last meeting here.
Okay.
I mean, it just makes good sense. Wayne's been a great council member and...
I would be in favor of the last meeting in July.
Last meeting in July?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's four or five of them, they can come in. It's not their case.
Have them come in on the last meeting in July and wait till the first meeting to do the appointment, or do the appointment at the last?
We could do it on the last meeting in July.
Do you want to have them come in and make their appointment that same evening?
I would be okay with that as long as we have the applications for that meeting.
Well, we will have the applications. We could...
Was there a deadline previously?
Yeah, I believe you have to have the resignation in hand before you can make the actual appointment for the charter.
Do we not have the resignation in hand?
No, we do not. I mean, we know it's forthcoming, but we don't have...
But we will have it.
It has to be a vacancy before we can receive an application. So therefore...
So if he is there that night, you would not have a vacancy until at the end of that night. I guess you could meet again.
I guess you could have a study session after the meeting.
But...
You could have a short... Or you could appoint at the beginning of the...
We could appoint the first, the first meeting in August.
In their seat.
The, the session with, we would invite them to would be the 24th of, the second one of July, which is the 24th, and then we'd make the appointment on Monday the 7th.
Can we discuss applications to that before he resigns? I mean, that's my confusion is if we can't, if we can't discuss applicants until he resigns, and at the last July meeting, he resigns, and after he resigns, then we can discuss applicants, which tells me then you would want to discuss applicants at the end of the council meeting in another study session, so that you could appoint at the beginning of the August meeting. Mollie, why are you making sense?
I understand. I would ask the attorney to weigh in.
Well, we, he's gone, so we could have his resignation that are in ahead of that 24th.
You can have, you can have a discussion prior, but you can't appoint because there's not a vacancy to fill. There's got to be...
We could have a discussion at that study session.
You can have a discussion, but you can't vote or, or appoint someone until there's actual...
Scheduled to make the appointment on the 7th?
Look, if Wayne resigns that night, you could call a special meeting after that and do the appointment that night, and then that person's at the August meeting, you don't miss a beat.
I would rather have some time between, between them coming to us and making the appointment.
And they can still be seated at the August meeting if there's a vacancy. So we appoint them, they can come up and take a seat.
Yep. Be sworn in. Everybody okay with that schedule? Okay, we'll do that. We will invite the 24th and appoint on the 7th. All right?
I have another question. What if, what if one of the 10 is due to be out of town on vacation on the 24th? Would it be possible for them to maybe come in on the 10th and talk to us beforehand?
Sure. Absolutely.
I don't want to give everybody the opportunity, and I know some people have things scheduled.
Yeah, good point. They could come in during the study session on the 10th on items. Yep. Absolutely. And by that time, we'll have, we'll have the names, and we can check their schedules and see if which ones can be there on the 24th. And if somebody can't, then we can do it on the 10th.
Never mind it.
Okay, never mind. Any other comments? Okay, council, thank you for that input. Appearances on items not on the agenda. And I have invited by the snap of a finger, a couple ladies here to kind of talk about the march. I was able to, and I'll, I'll talk about that on the, at the regular session, was able to attend the first part and the meeting and the great crowd that was there and everything. So they talked to me about that after, after the session and after the march. And I said, "Well, not everybody was able to be there that morning, so it'd be good for you to come and just tell us what happened that day and some of the facts and figures you have." So, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Radica, and city council members. We're here to present the map of the city that we presented at the march on June the 10th, which was very successful. It was a good day. Very pleased with it. Molly, that ready for us? What it shows is all the shootings, killings, and all over the city of Cape Girardeau. And at this time, we'll let Kay Hood take over with that.
Well, we wanted to see how many killings had been, had actually happened since 2000. And if you'll notice where all these pinpoints are, every single ward has had murder. There's actually 40 murders that have happened in the city of Cape since 2000.
So every one of those is a homicide.
Every single one of these murders.
Yes.
So, you know, it's, it's kind of compelling looking at this because a lot of these still would have not been solved. We still haven't gotten the final details on how many have been solved, but a lot of them have not.
Okay.
But since we started out in the streets since 2016, every single murder has had an arrest except for this last one on R. Henderson. So we need people to step out. We need people to get out into the streets to build these relationships because it's because we've been out talking to the people and building relationships that they're actually coming forward now. So we need you guys getting out there. You need to be talking to your people about the crimes that are going on. And it's not just the murders, it's all the crimes that are going on. And, you know, if we don't have open communication and trust with the community, we've got nothing. The police have nothing.
It's very significant that all, most in recent time... Right. Have been solved. Have had arrests. Have had arrests.
The one that has not had a arrest yet, but they've got success.
That, that we, the major K squad and police have run in, in past years, have run in kind of a wall because nobody would come forward and talk. And through the, through the anonymous tip line and through relationship building, as you said, more are talking, more are calling, and that is why, really.
Yeah, communication is the key.
Yeah.
And we want to thank the police captain Wes Blair, chief Wes Blair. And they have done an awesome job opening those lines of communication and working with the city, the people who are involved. And we want to say that that is not, this is not a South Side problem. As you can see, every ward has been touched with killings.
Right.
And so that's what we wanted to point out today to the council.
Yep, very good. And it's an everyday job.
Yes.
It will continue to be that way and...
And we've got these decals. If anybody wants to put one on their vehicle, I don't ever put decals on mine, but I've had enough about this. We will give you these.
Okay.
You want a T-shirt? $10.
Yep, okay, very, very good. And also, good you two, for your leadership.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Because you've put a lot of hours and a lot of heart into this project. Starting with Felicia and Kay, you have been, been a stalwart along the line, always, always present. So we thank you for being here. We're with you, and we'll continue.
This is certainly about the future of Cape Girardeau.
Absolutely.
And how we see it. And so, that's not Cape.
Yeah.
I'd like that changed.
Every Tuesday night, we go out and pray over a specific corner. We go to all four corners. And the people that come up that are broken, that come and talk to us are unreal. It's every week, brokenness shows up out there.
Sometimes in those dark moments is when we give that hope, that change of heart.
Yep. Thank you so much for your dedication and support. Okay, anyone else on any item that is not on the agenda this evening? Yes, sir?
Hello, everybody, mayor, council people. My name is Ron North, and I just have a letter here that I wanted to read, and it's concerning the city of Cape Girardeau water deposit disconnect reconnect fees. First, we stand in solidarity thanking Councilwoman Shelley Moore for facilitating a community meeting on Friday, June 16, and for participation of city manager Scott Meyer. The meeting was informative, well-attended by 27 persons from throughout the city. We come before you tonight with yet another plea on behalf of Cape Girardeau's most vulnerable population. We request that you rescind the 107% increase in the water bill deposit and more than 5% increase fee in the disconnect and reconnect when you disconnect a person's services. During the meeting, a few ideas emerged which we offer for consideration. One, rescind the 107% increase in the water bill deposit, instead increase incrementally until the goal of $155 is achieved. Do not increase the disconnect reconnect fee until the issue is studied a little further. Three, reopen conversation with CMO staff person to explore avenues for ensuring students understand the need for paying bills on time and consequences for leaving balances. Engage in discussion with landlords who rent to students about student utility bills. Create a position of liaison and collection, or collector, whose role is to assist persons in danger of services being disconnected with assessing services and to collect past due bills. Include persons impacted by changes in city policies in the conversation about the proposed changes to help shape outcome with, I'm sorry, which result in the least amount of harm to the most vulnerable. And my, our last point was create a voluntary contribution, maybe tick on your bill where other customers could voluntarily donate a dollar or two that would go specifically to helping those who may have issues on their bill. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Thank you for all you do in our community also. In fact, council, this is on the agenda tonight as part of the budget thing. So we'll be, as, as staff reviews the budget, we'll be talking about, about that actually during the study session. Anyone else appear before the council? Any item that is not on the agenda? Okay. And now, I don't know if you'll take us through the agenda. Absolutely, we have no presentations tonight, reports. You said, Mayor, you had a couple you were on the cover? Yeah. I want to visit, begin at the 7 o'clock about the, about the walk and the dedication of both Felicia and Kay and the, and the crowd that was there that, that morning. And it's growing. And appreciate their dedication. I'll talk about that a little bit. And thank the staff that was, that was there. Also, comment on, I did attend the reception for Jim Welger's retirement from the school district. Want to thank him for his dedicated service to our community. Education's so important to our, to our community and to, and our city in its entirety. And he's been a stalwart promoter and educator that has helped us along through a number of years and stay, really stabilized the administration, staff of our, our community. And then I'll comment real, just quickly on the, we're able to view the progress on the River Campus sculpture last week, and it'll be going up into the roundabout in late August, probably. Going to be a great addition to the River Campus area. Maybe even July. Pardon? Maybe even go up in July. Maybe even in August because they've got to do the landscaping around it. But I think the sculpture... They are, they're on a kind of a fast track. It was interesting because there were, all the students were there that were working on it, doing all the welding and everything. And then had also a documentary team that were filming, have been filming and documenting the whole process. Chris Lubin is a great leader of that, of that program and means a lot to our, to our community. Okay? Shelley, discuss your Friday night meeting and during communications?
Yes. Well, we had a town hall meeting on Friday, and it was open to anybody in the city of Cape Girardeau that had issues or concerns regarding the new rates that are being established, water rates. And so the turnout was good, real good, and the questions. And we had some leaders there, pastors. I would like to thank all of the pastors that came and helped facilitate the moment. And we had a lot of good questions and a lot of dialogue. And we came up with a lot of solutions, possible solutions. We dug deep into what was going on and recognizing there is an issue and trying to find out how to solve that issue. Everybody in Ward 2 especially, not everybody is trying to dodge or not pay their bill, but they are having issues and problems in paying their bill. And we want to address that because it's going to always be with us, no matter what. You're going to always have that. But at the same time, we feel like there should be something that we could put in place that would assist those that are really burdened by this rate. So it was a good one. And afterwards, they asked if we could come back. So one, about three people or more, I know three said to me that they would like to do it every two weeks, and I would say, "Every two weeks." But town hall, maybe, maybe once a month, we could come together and, and see how we can discuss issue that's going on in Cape that is going to affect everybody. But it was really successful. Truly, the city manager Scott, he really answered. I know he was exhausted because we supposed to be over at 7 o'clock, and we didn't get out into Route 8, going on 8:30. But it was really good because the people really did have concerns, and they really asked good questions, and it was just really nice. So when we get ready to have the next town hall meeting, I'll let everybody know.
Okay. Any other council? Communications? Okay, staff? I don't think we have any tonight. Do you want any public hearings tonight? The consent agenda, we do have a pretty long extent, consent agenda, the, starting with number two, we have the Taxi Cab and Transportation Network Company, the second and third reading of that ordinance. We have the Kiwanis Drive, Maria Luisa Lane, that naming of that, that drive, that was, if you remember, that was key to...
drive, that was, if you remember, that was key to, to, uh, people finding, uh, the new police station, uh, through, uh, uh, the finding, uh, on the roadway with the computers. Number four is the drainage mince on Evergreen, uh, West Perry Village, just south of golf course there. Number five is the wayfinding signing agreement with MODOC, all these are the second and third readings. Uh, number six is the vacating of the northernmost alley right away, um, down between Missouri and, uh, uh, this is, and New Madrid, uh, streets, uh, vacating that, uh, alley in there, second, third reading of that. Number seven is, uh, the changing of zoning from R3 to R2 at 600 Highland Drive. Number eight is the transportation planning consolidated grant agreement with Missouri Highway Transportation Commission, second, third reading of that agreement. Uh, number nine is our annual operating budget. Uh, this would be the one probably we'd want to, uh, consider removing if you wish to make the change suggested for the golf course, um, and, or the additional for the, uh, matching of the pledges for deposits, um, so that would be one, if you care to do those things, we'll need to remove from the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to have that removed for, uh, for, uh, further discussion. So we'll need when we, um, adopt the agenda, uh, to add the removal of, uh, item nine on the consent agenda, uh, for, to remove it for, uh, further discussion, and then we'll, uh, cover it after the consent agenda before the new ordinances.
Turn it on.
Uh, number 10 is the, uh, special warranty deed for the property, uh, to CMO Legends, that's for the development out on North Sprig Street, the sale of that, uh, that property. Uh, number 11 is establishes utility rates, uh, for solid waste and sewer, and water rates, um, unless you plan, uh, on changing the rates itself, um, there's, uh, you would not need to remove this, uh, in order to do the, um, the budgeting of the other, uh, of the assistance for the, um, for the deposit, but it, so that one can remain on the consent unless you want to actually change the rates. Number 12 would be a record plat of Collins Mill subdivision, and that completes the second and third readings, uh, of the ordinances. Uh, number 13 starts the resolutions, the reading in order, uh, of a license and identity agreement on, uh, uh, on, uh, there were 115 Broadway, I believe that's Bloom is the business that's there, uh, for their, um, awning. Uh, number 14 is, uh, with Festi Agreement to do, Festi Masonry to do the restrooms in Arena Park, uh, it's a little less than $60,000 to do the, do that part of that restroom project, uh, you know, we need to get that done for, for the fair, for sure, so we want to get that moving ahead. And then 15 is, is 12, uh, hanger leases, one of them is a, uh, T-hanger, and the other one, there are 11 are, uh, hanger leases in the old Commander Building, uh, so that's moving ahead on these to get, uh, some income from that, uh, from those, and this is officially, we've been getting income, leasing, but this, this is actually the leases, uh, for those 12, um, entities. And then number 16 is a lease agreement for Elite Avionics Services, we, uh, this is a startup business, uh, some folks out there have, uh, started up a business, we used to have avionics business out at, uh, at the airport, and then they shut down, and now then this comes back in and fills that void, and it's a great addition, and as well as, it's a new business, so congratulations on that, Bruce, appreciate that. Last two are acceptance of improvements, the first one is for the Habitat for Habitat for Humanity, uh, development there on, uh, just off of Clark Avenue, and the second one is the Collins Mill subdivision, that's off of Old Hopper Road. Are there any other items that you wish to, um, abstain or remove from the consent agenda, other than number nine?
I'll be abstaining from the 12, 13, and 18.
Get those, Bruce? 12, 13, and 18. Others? Under the ordinances, uh, the first one is the, uh, is our mini-scheduled W regarding truck routes, uh, pull the, um, the map of that, we, it, uh, uh, it's primarily state routes, but then we have a few city routes that connect to those to establish, uh, uh, truck routes within the city, uh, this is a, an update, uh, we had some truck routes left over from when they had the old bridge, and so this comprehensively changes that and makes that, um, uh, very planned and, and much more sense of, of it, so, uh, that's the truck route, uh, in number 19. Number 20 establishes some handicapped parking spa, uh, spaces along Main Street, uh, this is one of the places, parking places already exist, but we are coming back and, and passing the ordinance that they caught that, that, uh, those did not have an ordinance with them. Number 21 is record plat for Cape West Village Forest Subdivision, um, this is out off of Kell Farm Road, uh, out there, and, and takes five lots and makes four out of it. Two is, uh, record plat at Edgewood, uh, subdivision off of Carmelia, um, it's a corner lot there, and so they're kind of going to face it the other way, and so taking two lots and making one out of that, and have some, uh, some setbacks, uh, exceptions that they're doing there. Then number 23 is kind of our cleanup budget, uh, year, the end of the fiscal year, this cleans up and moves some funds around to different, uh, funds necessary to, uh, to finish out and complete our, our fiscal year. Any questions on any of those items? Not 21 is, or 24 is the appointment to the library board, I believe that's a mayor's appointment.
Mayor's appointment, and those are two reappointments, Amy Trueblood and John McGowan. So I'll ask for consent there, and, and the board asked for, to leave the other, uh, uh, appointment open, uh, until the next meeting, so we'll just be appointing the two, uh, reappointments to the library board of directors.
I believe you have some other memos there to, uh, look at?
Yep.
And, uh, that'll be all, Mayor.
Okay. Counsel, anything else to come before us, uh, our study session before we adjourn? Anything?
I just have one thing.
Okay.
Cause it would be here, kudos to, uh, Bruce for getting those leases in hand, I know we've been. Had to see those, those twelve leases, uh, get signed.
Yeah, and, uh, and in addition to that, and Scott mentioned it, but the, the new startup business and avionics back, uh, uh, that's a great, that's a great thing to, to have, and that'll be in, in that building also, right?
Those are good trends.
Yep, okay, very good. Uh, counsel, we do need to have a, uh, closed session tonight, legal actions, litigation, communication with our legal counsel and property transactions pursuant to sections of 610, 021, number one and two, if I could have a motion.
All right.
Again, second by guard, doesn't favorize, as opposed, okay, we'll adjourn and reconvene at 7:00 P. M.
That's one way to, to sure nobody's going to call you.
If they do, they're going to shout.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either.
It's just, every, some people try to be everywhere.
Yeah. Even with my rings, I sometimes do not answer.
No, I don't.